Neil.
Neil, you hear?
You hear us, Neil? All right. All right, good evening, everybody. We call this meeting the Select Board to Order for April fifteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty four P M. We have a quorum. Old business. No?
Not for tonight.
New business, a consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Zaya I.
Peter I?
Sandra I.
The total on that's forty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety cents. Approval of the minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty five, Select Board Meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty five Select Board Meeting as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Zaya I.
Peter I?
Sandra I.
Thank you. Committee appointments.
I move that we appoint Jonathan Hall to a one-year term. On the, to the old.
Got a two-year term checked off.
Yeah, like we called him to verify, because again, if you appoint him tonight, he'd be done in two months, so. He said three years.
Okay, so.
Two year.
To rewind and begin again. I move that we appoint Jonathan Hall to a two-year term to the Old Church on the Hill Committee. With the term ending six thirty twenty twenty five.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty.
Should be twenty-six, it says twenty-five.
I'm reading off of this page for anybody.
Did I read your? Did. It didn't update it after we talked to him, yes, it should be twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that motion. It's convoluted, it's a lot.
Sorry, Jonathan.
All right, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, Bob I?
Zaya I.
Peter I?
Sandra I.
Great, thank you, Jonathan.
Looks like a good, uh, fit.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah, Jonathan, I'll read.
Start buildings and cultural resources, so nice.
Sounds like a wonderful addition.
All right, acceptance of the quarterly financial report, Q three. I see. Cam got out. Early, right?
Dare I risk? I'd like to move that we accept the quarterly financial report for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, quarter three.
I will second that motion.
All right, further discussion? This is posted online.
Under the, um, on the town website, under the Budget Committee.
Correct. Anybody have any specific questions? Just to note, I know we've had discussions about the general ledger. Still haven't cleaned that up. Obviously, the auditors are still working on finishing up that stuff, so. We haven't consolidated that down, so it's not such a mess. And then after I ran this report, there were a couple of, not duplicate entries, but. Yeah, it was duplicate entries. I was trying to put the, like, I think it was the community events checking account balance into the G L. And I apparently did it twice, so. Since this report's come out, I backed out the first one, or the second one that I did, so that it's correct in our system now, but. On the G L, under one of the first accounts, you see it's close to twenty grand or something like. Yeah, uh, oh, oh, five-five. It shows sixteen thousand dollars. It's not. I backed up the, the ten thousand dollars, that was the initial that I had put in. Now, it's, it's in the ballpark for six thousand dollars, which matches. The, uh, bank account. Sheet at the beginning of the report for that account.
Okay, yes.
So Cameron, I'd just like to ask you, looking at. Specifically, the first three pages of this report. Are there any amounts? In the balance columns? That you see that could be? Of concern? Numbers that aren't where they should be, or where we'd expect them to be?
I mean, we've already, we've already discussed buyer, which actually, they're, they've slowed down, so I think we're gonna be all set there. Animal welfare, barring we don't have any significant issues, I think what we have there is good. Obviously, administration, there's still. Quite a share of unexpended balance there, a lot of that's, uh, with cop insurance. Municipal centers, where, I mean, everything looks.
Very unexpected to me at this.
It's, it's in that seventy-five to eighty range. Other than debt service, because some of those, we have one payment a year, so. Um, but for the most part, I think we're gonna be all set underneath them.
And we expect? All of the? Revenues? That were projected.
Uh, yes, so. We're over on municipal center administration. I, I. Can't foresee how we wouldn't get thirty-four thousand in the next three months. Um, rescue department, I mean, we've hit on that as well, the transfer, the differences in the transfers, so. May they come up short, yes, but I think where we're gonna end up. On. Everything else, it's not gonna.
Sure.
Cause too many issues. Um, solid waste, it looks. It looks. It's at the fifty percent mark, um, I sent out a statement to them, that was on me, I forgot to send the invoice out to them, so they have the new invoice, and they'll be paying. Through the end of the year, so all the summers will be paid up on that. Um, any of the uncollected balances, uh, cemetery's a good example, as well as library, I haven't done the transfers from the trust funds over to those accounts, and they're ceded for those, so that's why those look high.
Sure.
But all in all, I mean, I think we're, I think we're looking good. Municipal revenue sharing, I'm kinda keeping an eye on, because the deposit we got last month was a lot lower than the prior months. And with everything going on with state, I. Open that, that resets, and we actually get what they originally projected, but. Only time will tell. So I mean, all in, we've not kind of, you know, property taxes. We've collected one million ninety-five. Um, so we've got outstanding, we get a collection of three hundred eighty-one thousand to be on track with revenues. Which with three months to go, if you average that all out, that's where we should be. Homestead exemption reimbursement came in lower, but that's not part of our revenue, it's part of the whole calculation when we do the taxes, so. And that's on an eighteen-month cycle, so some years are higher, some years are lower.
And would you expect us to be at the fiftieth percentile?
I actually think that's, I actually think that's pretty good, considering the second half hasn't, isn't even due yet, so. I'd say if, if it's after November and you're sitting at fifty percent. Or, in this case, December, then you're doing all right. I mean, yes, that means some people probably paid the full year versus half, but. It's a good number to be at halfway through, or halfway through the tax collection here. But you can definitely see it if you look at the next page, when we look at. Um, actually, no, you really can't see it here, but checking account money market, they're starting to go down a little bit, but that's because we're getting closer and closer to. The tax due date, so that number in May will climb up significantly. Especially when you look at a figure of, you know, we still have a school. Six hundred and something thousand. So, a lot of what comes in in that second half is school money. Um, counties already paid for it, we pay that at the beginning of the year, so. The biggest expense right now is just monthly school payments. And then interest rates have gone down a little bit, because we're tied to the market, so if market rates go down, our interest rate goes down, but we're, we're still, we're still at four point one-five. Actually, we might be at three point eight now, I, I'll have to double check. It was changing on a monthly basis by a couple of bases, it was just. Gradually ticking down. It's not something I used to have to keep an eye on, because it was consistently always the same, but everything. It changes faster than we can keep track of it. But other than that, and looking over everything, I, I feel confident, we're, we're looking good, our, uh. Trust funds are still making decent. Interests. I gave the rundown of where we're at for the year, so. The two big ones are the Library Anonymous Trust. It's already pooled in seventy-five hundred dollars in interest this year. And then the John DeLong Fund, which gets split four ways. We're up to five thousand there. And then the perpetual care for Buckfield Damon, so. With the way interest rates were at the beginning of this year, you know, twenty-three hundred dollars, that's what we accept as revenue for. That assist us with the maintenance, so you, you can see, like. Fifty-dollar perpetual care payments back in the fifties. Didn't really result in significant increases in income. This many years later. I don't have a book, do I have a book, anything? I do. I don't. The only thing I didn't keep, I don't, I don't typically put in this report, which I should, is, uh. I didn't include the principal balances of each of the trust fund accounts, but I do have that information I can forward on to you. There's multiple reports that I use to compile it all together, so.
Yeah, could you send that to us and maybe find a home for it on the Budget Committee, please, just off?
I think what I'll probably do is I'll add it into this, this one.
Okay.
If you want me to. And then when I, I'll re-scan it, so that. All of it'll be there.
I'd like to see that. Well, we're kind of on the money topic, I did wanna ask, um, about the FEMA funding we would have gotten from the storm. Last year, where would I find that, or?
You won't find it anytime soon. So there's a G L account that has some of our FEMA costs tied into it, um, it's G L. Off the top of my head. It says, uh, December twenty twenty-three FEMA. Funds, it's G L one. Zero seven two seven. So it's sixty, right now it's sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and nine. So anytime I have to pay for something, so like right now, I have till June or July to finish the stuff at the rec field dug out and the batting cage. Um, the warrants that you approved, one of those was a payment for the batting cage, so it can be delivered and set up. So that, it will come out of that account, and it'll sit there until we collect that money from FEMA. However, we received an email from. Was it M E M A? We received an email the other day that basically said, everything's at a standstill right now while they review everything again. So going through that whole process was a significant. Pain in the, but.
Yeah.
Um, because you had so many different levels of, you know, people that had to check it, whether it be, um, historic preservation or whatever. Um, so it's already gone through all those reviews before they approved it, and now. With the new administration, they're reviewing it again.
Yeah.
So I. I would say we're probably looking at another six to twelve months before we see that.
Yeah. Would you be able to forward that email to me as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
Trust fund balances. So everything has been obligated to Buckfield for those projects, it's just a matter of. Waiting for the feds to get the money to M E M A and then M E M A to introduce that stuff. I just feel bad for towns like, you know, J that had, you know, millions of dollars worth of stuff that they've already paid to fix, and now have to sit there and wait for this money.
No doubt. It's rough.
I have another question.
I'll email you if I think of them. When I think of that, sure, I'll have some.
All good, all right, just making sure. All right, so all those in favor, Bob I?
Zaya I.
Peter I?
Sandra I.
Right. Tax-acquired properties, quitclaim deed.
So I believe you have a copy of it in your back door.
Absolutely.
By our speech.
The owner has come in and. Made a payment. On two of the tax years that had liens on them. The one thing, so I know in years past, we've gone. And we've done. Make them pay all the recurrent. With the changes in statute and how we have to dis, the, the process we have to go through to dispose of, uh. Tax-acquired property, and it being like a year and a half. It doesn't make sense for the town to sit on, I mean, in my opinion, this is my opinion, it doesn't make sense for us to sit on the property. Especially if they've gone and paid off the foreclosure lien, and then the subsequent lien after that. So, this property itself still has taxes that are due, but. They're making. They're making an effort, and both the foreclosure, you know, the, the two foreclosure ones have been paid. Potential liability aspects for the town is, if we don't sell it and somebody were to leave. Leave the property, now we're liable for it, so if something happens. So I think. My recommendation to you is, you know, especially in this situation, or any situation similar to it, I've got a couple of other property owners, or former property owners that are coming in. Religiously making weekly or monthly payments. Um, getting that caught up is, return it back to them as soon as they've paid off that. Foreclosure, and then. It doesn't cancel out any other liens that might be on the property, so if they don't pay it before the next due date, it's gonna foreclose again. But. Juggling it with, you know, a ninety-day notice, we're gonna sell your property, listing it with a broker, accumulating costs. Having to wait almost a year and a half before this thing is done, I think it's in the best interest of the town to say. Hey, you paid good on the obligation at this point, you know, it doesn't wipe out any other additional liens. Deed it back over, we don't have to record it, the deed goes to them, and then. If it happens again, we go through the process again.
Maybe with that thought is, if it happens again. Then we hold on to it until everything is caught up.
Well, it's seen, this is, this is where I, I've been to a lot of these MMA conferences discussing this stuff, is the attorneys. The attorneys will tell you, get rid of the property as soon as possible. Right, so, do you go into this, the, the day of tax acquires, we have the next meeting, we send out ninety-day notices, we're gonna sell the property, and we go that route? If they can't pay it within that ninety days? And play a hard line with it, or do we try to work with people? Because they don't want the town to be liable.
Does it have to be ninety days?
No, that's how long I have, so, it, it doesn't have to be, the, the attorneys will tell you, do not sit on tax-acquired property, which essentially is what we're doing, right, we've been sitting on tax-acquired property for a year now. We've got the R F P out for broker services for any properties that aren't making any effort. To pay this stuff. But the longer we own it, the longer we're liable for it. So. This was one situation where we got two payments for two liens that, one that foreclosed and the one that was going to foreclose. A second time, even though technically it was already, and, uh. So that's current, so the taxes, there's one other active lien on the property. But that won't mature until next year. This whole time period. I feel that deeding it back over to them, it's their liability, right, their insurance, their, you know, whatever. Is in the best interest of the town, rather than us sit on it, and, because we don't. We're not benefiting from it like we used to, and, and I don't mean to sound. Like that, but, you know, in years past, you could say, you don't pay it, we'll sell it, and then we get to keep all the proceeds, you can't do that anymore. Right, so the only thing we're doing is accumulating costs. That. We all have to track everything. Until you get to that point, and it's. This is a money suck for small municipalities, if we.
I, I one hundred percent hear you and. Agree, and particularly, like, in this case, to do this. But. Maybe preserving the right to look ahead, that. If. There is a property owner who is in that cycle of.
You can't keep doing this. Year after year after year.
So, as, as long. People get themselves current. Deed it back, they continue to, to work towards paying everything off, that's great, one hundred percent support that, that's ultimately what we want. But, um. To get caught up and then foreclose, and get caught up and then foreclose, that at that point.
So this was.
And I'm not saying this is the case with this property.
No, and, and so I will tell you that typically, this isn't what happens, right? So typically, the town of Buckfield leans taxes every year. But if you recall. In twenty-one, prior to me coming here. They didn't lean taxes, and after a year, you, you can't lean it, so the tax is still there. So what happens is every year you send out lien notices on taxes that are due, it's for that subsequent year that, of taxes, they receive the notice. It says you owe twenty-four hundred dollars, whatever the heck the taxes are. They come in, they make that payment. Well. That twenty-four hundred dollars get applied to the twenty-one taxes that the town didn't lean. So i- it's kind of like, the cycle is, some people do that, that's just how they do it, and, uh, there's people in town, there's a few of them that do it, and. It never goes into foreclosure, but I, I feel like this past year, the ones that did, it was a direct result of the town not leaning that. Which right, wrong, or indifferent, it doesn't really matter, but I think a lot of it was, uh. We screwed the cycle up and then people got confused. So obviously, the intent of the town is just to collect what's owed. And, um, I can definitely feel for some of these people, at the same time, you know. You gotta obviously stay on top of what you owe for taxes, and know when things are due, but. The town contributed to this one.
Is there maybe like an appropriate amount of time that we could set to? Kind of offset that mistake where we're giving people ample notice and, you know, affording them this sort of, I guess I'll call it forgiveness. But up until a certain point, where like, you know, say, the board ten years down the road, we can, we can set to consider.
So there's.
Not doing it anymore.
There's different things we're doing, if you recall on our draft warrant, and I brought this to you after going to an MMA conference about the new foreclosure laws was. Having a warrant article to waive foreclosure, because in certain cases, it doesn't make sense. Yes, the taxes will continue to accumulate, and it's kind of bad debt, but at some point, the property's gonna change hands. And the taxes are gonna have to be paid. But, the cost to the town could be significant, so we've got that. Last year's foreclosure list was actually relatively small, I think it was a total of seven. So it's not like there's a ton of people that were caught up in this. There were a ton of people that were caught off guard when they realized they owed more. Um, what I've tried, what I've started doing when we send out those lien notices, is also printing out a, a list of their account activity, so they can see, like, hey, this, because our letters are specific to one year. But if they owe any money prior to that, it'll also show every year prior to that, so they'll know what their true balance is. For it, so I'm hoping this, this situation doesn't happen again where one year caught them off guard, because ever since I've been here. Tax collectors leaned year after year, and we have a better understanding of it now, um, it was just that mix-up year, but. I just. Listening to all these lawyers talk and listening to. The changes and the rules and the added requirements of the town, and, you know, all these things we have to do. It just doesn't make any sense for the town to. Sit on it, right? We needed you to pay, if you're leaning this for twenty-five hundred dollars, we needed you to pay this, you came in, you paid it. At that point, back to you, you may have another lien, and you're gonna have to pay that one, but I think, looking at the town's best interests. That's the route that I would recommend the board take, because. It's. It's a convoluted system now, it, it just, it really is. Now, if you have somebody that hasn't made a payment in four years, and after the multiple certified letters we've sent them still hasn't done anything. Absolutely, I would recommend to the board that they dispose of that property as quickly as possible. But again, the ones we foreclosed last year, we get a send out a ninety-day notice, we gotta wait for them. Then we list it with a broker, and then we have to list it with them for, I think, a year. And take the highest possible offer we can get. Then we have to send them. There's a whole process to send them the excess funds after as well.
Have you received any responses to the? Was it an R F P?
I was just about to ask, for the broker.
Uh, not yet, I've got one, one that reached out to me, and I sent it off to him, and then I'm gonna have the town clerk, because I, I put it through till the thirtieth. I believe. Um, I'm gonna send it off, like mass. Push it out to a bunch of brokers and see what we get from there.
Is that's the next step, and folks that have come and asked me about where we are in the process with some of the. Properties. That you've referenced.
Yep.
And. That, that's the next step for us in, in this process, is we need to, yeah.
We wanna find a broker that we can use, but, I mean, really, the next step right now is sending a letter to anybody that's currently tax-acquired. Um, that says that we intend on. Selling their property. And then the town has to wait ninety days before they can say to a broker, yes, you can go ahead and list it. That's if any brokers wanna do it.
And we need a broker first.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if our RPMs, you know, you could send out the notices now, and then, you know, by then, we should have that figured out, but what's to say nobody? Then we go through the process of, if we can't find a broker that wants to commit to doing it on a regular basis for us, which is not a huge number of times, is, uh. You basically take the property list and you send it off to fifteen brokers, and if you get three no's, and nobody wants to list it, then you can move back to the old process of. Putting it up for auction or bid or whatever. But if you find one broker that says to list it, that's the route you have to take.
So before we. Go there, um, I'll make a motion that we approve and sign. The quitclaim deed. To prior donor zero zero two dash zero zero five dash zero zero four dash zero zero five.
Oh, second?
Further discussion?
Do we, when people get, so the people who are kind of tied up in this, and, uh, get that. Letter explaining to them, like, you know, their outstanding balance or what have you, is there, you know, an invitation to? Talk to someone about it on that letter that they receive? Just kind of like an open line of communication to a designated person who can take the time to explain.
So that's.
What it all means, yeah.
And I've, I've talked to almost everybody that we tax-acquired the property, the, the problem is, like, I can come in and walk them through the process, and this is what it is, and, you know, they'll be like. I've had questions like, oh, can you, can you delay the foreclosure, like, I don't have the authority to do that.
Right.
Right, and because there wasn't a warrant article, you don't have the authority to do that, so all I can really do is relay the information to them, which is what I've done. Um, next year, if that warrant article passes, and there are certain situations, it doesn't wipe out the, the lien if you waive foreclosure, the lien's still there. So if they did end up selling the property. It would have to be paid off before any of that could happen, but, um. It's definitely a frustrating situation for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Because. As a treasurer, I am the person they have to come to, because once it's leaned by the tax collector, their. Hands are clear of it, and that was my problem. But. Oftentimes, the issue is outside of sharing this information that we've discussed, I, I don't have any answers for them. Um, you know, people will come and be like, can I make weekly payments, I encourage them to make payments. Because obviously, it shows you, when it comes time to do something like this, that, hey, they're coming in on a weekly basis, they're making payments, when it gets paid off, I can show you, like, this is what they did. But outside of that, I mean.
And there are. Several steps. Before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, so several opportunities for someone. To come in and say, what, what are my alternatives, how can I make this right?
Okay.
And then, as we've gotten more comfortable in the office, like, my first year here, when we did the lien work, you know, we got lambasted about, well, why didn't you send me out letters saying that I was, you know, it was getting to this point and all sorts of stuff? It takes a lot of work to stuff envelopes with reminders, and, like, we send out a tax bill. We did, I think. Last year or the year prior. With the thirty-day notice, I. Or, I had sent letters out to people that were behind, saying, hey, you know, this is due, because the system allows us to do that, we can run them. Um just a reminder, hey, it's due, and then once it gets to that point in like. We're almost there, like, no, we still got a little bit, so like June, July, August, you get to that eight month mark, then we send out that. Uh first notice of impending for or not impending foreclosure, a pending lien. Uh where we just let them know like, hey, you have thirty days to make this payment or a lien is gonna be filed. And then once the lien is filed, I mean, it's recorded at that point. I went above and beyond and sent copies of the lien certificates to everybody, but that it's not required to send. A copy of the lien, no, we send, I'm trying to remember the process. So it's like, I guess my biggest frustration with it is, is when I send out a hundred and eighty thirty day notices. And fifty of them get kicked back.
Yeah.
And then when it comes time to the lien, you send everything out again and fifty of them get kicked back and it's like.
Please update your address.
Right, cause I can send all the notifications in the world, but if they're not receiving them and and it's not always the address is wrong, sometimes it's. Unclaimed, 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 returned. So people know what it is and just don't pick it up.
That doesn't mean that it stops the process.
No, it doesn't. Because what'll happen is it'll get kicked back, but now I send a copy via regular mail. And those don't don't come back. So, but it's a cost. You know, the the problem is once we send that first certified letter, that's an added cost that gets applied to their tax bill every time it happens. On top of interest and stuff, so. I mean, we try to go the route of send out letters early on before it gets to that process, just to remind people, cause some people don't get their bills or forgot where their bills are, so. We're trying to be as helpful as possible within reason. And it's been, it's been good since a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago it was significantly high and that was because of that twenty one, twenty two year. But I think we're back on a good cycle.
It's good to hear.
Minus fact that costs everything are going through the roof.
Right.
I understand.
Well, yeah, and exactly, and we're not, you know. Looking to make life any more difficult than it needs to be.
I'm going all talking, Bob.
It's a process, we don't wanna be real tards, you know, that's. Motion is made, so all those in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
All right.
And then I would like to make a motion that we. Direct the town manager to send out, is it ninety day notices? What what's the term?
Oh, the, it's a ninety day notice of impending sale.
Send out ninety day notice of impending sale. Through the properties that are. At that stage of the process.
I'll second that motion.
Hmm, further discussion? All right, all those in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
All right. Other business?
Did we lose you? We did.
Lost me off, uh oh. All right.
Oh. Yes. You're another business, right? Um I liked, so there's a few Tuesdays that you have meetings scheduled for. The um I have middle school softball games, so. So I didn't know if either the board wanted to just have the meetings by themselves or if you wanted to move it to a different daily. I can give you the dates. Um one of them is June tenth, which I assume you were gonna change that meeting anyways because it's election day. Um so this meeting room is not available and I wouldn't recommend having a meeting that day.
We started in May.
You don't like working backwards?
No, actually, well, some things.
All right, so May. May sixth is our next meeting. We have a game in Old Orchard Beach. I don't think I'll be here by six o'clock.
I will not be able to attend that meeting either. I'm on vacay.
Okay, so. So that was the first Tuesday, the third Tuesday is May.
May nineteenth, I believe.
Twentieth.
I'm sorry, they've got the date wrong, yes, the twentieth. And this is Tuesday, May nineteenth, I'm assuming they meant May twentieth, we have a home game.
So if we shifted the May sixth meeting. Push that back a week and then push the May twentieth meeting back a week. Does that work for the two of you?
That would work for myself.
So we're going to the thirteenth and twenty seventh?
Yes.
Yeah.
How about you, Coach?
Can't do the twenty seventh, we have a game that day as well.
So you're a no go on the twentieth and the twenty seventh?
Correct.
So do we wanna look at a different day of the week? Or? Think we could probably fly solo?
I was gonna say, maybe we try it without the training wheels.
Yeah. Twenty seven?
Yep.
So we've zellia the keys to the uh electronics booth.
You did a good job last time. We're just shifting them a week later. Instead of first and third, second and fourth.
So when when were you doing?
So. I'm like, let me make a motion for May. Um I'm gonna make a motion that we reschedule our May sixth meeting for the thirteenth. And the twentieth meeting for the twenty seventh.
I will second that motion.
Further discussion?
All right, trying to pull up the calendar so I can do this in real time.
Okay.
Yeah, good idea.
There's no conflicts with other committees, boards.
Let us see.
But there's an overlap of solid waste committee meeting, I guess that's what.
Not right now, but.
Or a school board? School board meetings on Tuesdays?
School board meetings are on Mondays typically, except for May twenty eighth is that budget meeting, which is the day after.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so looking at May. Yeah, I don't know why that is like that, that should not be there. But now it can be there, cause you said the. I can delete this one.
I think we talked about it. Previously. And tentatively rescheduled it. Because of the June. Meetings.
Did we vote yet? No, no, all right. But we're good to vote on that, right?
Yeah.
Everybody's good, all right, all those in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
All right.
So if we move to June.
June.
We're supposed to have one on the third.
And the.
Seventeenth. When's election day? So this, is there any conflict in June?
The the June tenth meeting needs to be moved, cause.
Are we supposed to have one on the tenth?
Yeah.
The first Tuesday is the third.
Oh.
First the tenth.
No, you're good.
The eighth. But the first meeting should be on the third.
I was wondering, it's in there as a repeat or something.
All right, so going back to May that you just voted on, it's the thirteenth and the twenty seventh now?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I can delete this one. Right, so, right, so if we have one, our scheduled meetings would be the third and the seventeenth would be fine, right? And then election day is the tenth, thirteen. If that one looks right.
Was the regularly scheduled program in June look good for people?
That works for me.
It works for me.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I just need to check with Coach.
So all I need to do is just delete the tenth one, cause it didn't exist anyway.
And that is election day, right?
Probably takes time for it to update, my calendar looks good. I've got the thirteenth, the twenty seventh of May, the third of May, June and. The seventeenth of June. Then the first of uh July.
Yes.
So while we're looking at all of this. One republic hearing before election day?
Oh, maybe that's why it was early.
I don't, but I don't have it in my calendar.
No, cause if you look at every month I did, for some reason, it's got three meetings.
Yeah, it said the same for May as well.
So if we.
Do a public hearing before the.
Do a republic hearing on the same day as one of our select board meetings?
People, the twenty seventh or the third, right?
Yes.
Probably the third, I guess, right?
Closest to.
Closest to the election.
Yeah.
Which I don't have anything on that day.
So I'd like to make a motion that we hold a public hearing. On June third at six thirty PM to review the warrant articles.
Do we want to do six thirty or six? And then the.
If we had nothing.
Um with. The select board meeting to follow.
I'll second that motion.
Right, further discussion?
I mean, typically, we push it a half hour.
Yeah.
Ahead, right, so.
Did you say we had anything planned for that select board meeting at the moment?
Not currently.
Okay, right, but time will tell.
Right.
Yeah.
I think if we push it ahead a little bit, it benefits everybody.
It works for me.
Well, sticks isn't unreasonable, right?
Um I, yeah, yeah.
So I'll amend my motion. To begin the public hearing at six o'clock. On June third. With the regularly scheduled select board meeting to follow.
And I will continue to second.
All right, further discussion on that one? Yeah, all those in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
All right, thank you. What bad as I thought it might be? Well, we had to really change one, I think. All right.
Wish I had them on the calendar anyways, technically, you didn't have to change anything.
Any other other business?
Um I did wanna have a discussion, I don't know that I need to make a motion for that this tonight, but um for the solid waste committee. We've been having some pretty frequent hearings and one of our selectmen that is not able to attend hasn't for. Um a couple at this point, so I was wondering if, cause I mean, me and Bob are already on the committee, I was wondering if one of the two of you. Had a willingness to at least join the committee in the interim and I can make an official moment, uh movement.
Solid waste?
Yeah, the solid waste committee.
The current member needs to be assigned.
Um. I don't, I don't know, there's a, there's not a.
There's no real term limit and it's been like that for over a year anyways, so really. The board hasn't had the discussion about, well, no, I guess you did have.
We appointed ourselves pretty much, I think.
Yeah.
The board has the authority to appoint those members, so.
I can do it, my committees are pretty much. Nonexistent, so.
Would you, would you be able to attend the meeting next Tuesday?
In Sumner.
It will be in Sumner and it will be.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
So I'm hoping it's, so they reached out to me and said six o'clock and I said, well, I have it down as five thirty. And I didn't hear back, so I'm assuming it's still five thirty.
Well, we get that five thirty and it's six.
Uh I mean, six work, either way works for me, if I think it's at six, I honestly.
So what?
Might wanna go with their word.
Anything different.
And where is this?
The Summertown office, it's right next to the post office.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Cool, and I'll um. I'll send you some, I can forward you the email Cam sent. Um if he doesn't get me to it and then I can. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I forwarded that to everybody, so you guys. Yeah. I figured you'd all want the heads up that. Prices are going up. I won't be there, so what I'll do is I'll put a packet together and get it off to their town clerk, so they'll be ready for the meeting. But. I pretty much covered the basis of everything that had happened at that meeting, Bill was there too, so he he should be at the meeting. So if there's any questions, he can fill you in.
So can I make a motion to make Peter like a interim member? Or do I make a motion to? Remove Heather and appoint Peter? Okay. I will make a motion that we remove Heather Henley from the solid waste committee.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All right.
All right, all in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
And I will make a motion that we appoint Peter Fickett to the solid waste committee.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome, I look forward to it.
They can be lively.
Do I need to bring my own solid waste or?
We need to recycle more.
I can, I'll blow it.
All right, any other other business? No. Um. So I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, so to one MRS A subsection four oh five. Dash six. Which one are we using, I don't remember.
I think it's A.
Right. Six A, okay.
Or personnel, yeah.
Personnel issue, yep.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, Bob, I.
Zoe, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Who seconded?
I did.
You already said the time.
Oh, no, I did not, at seven twenty three PM. Oh, no, I did not. At seven twenty-three P M.